Good evening and welcome to the November 24th Town of Proctor Select Board Meeting. If you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. The first order of business is to review and approve the agenda. And so, I'd just like to take, be under discussion and action items and take that off. We'll move that to the December agenda. Is there anything else that needs to be added? Nope. Okay. A motion would be in order?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And a motion will be in order to approve the November 10th Select Board Meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. So, a couple things. We have some stuff coming up, like right now, the story walk over by the rink in the high school. The high school class that does that, the outdoor class, they've put up a new story for the walk. And they've put up a little about the rink and about the hill, the toes.
Yeah, the skate toe.
Yeah. And then, December 6th, which is a Saturday at 5:30, we're going to do cookies and carols over at the library, kind of back to the old school. We'll be upstairs singing and then go downstairs for crafts. And December 5th, I can't remember what time, but I saw it, is the casella truck parade. So, if people are interested in that, they should, I think it's around 6 o'clock, I think maybe it starts.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the time we got it.
But it's, I know it is on Friday, the 5th. So, if people are interested, they can look for the time for that and...
And the town is just gonna, we're getting a tree and we're just gonna put it in the gazebo and light it because nobody really shows up for that.
Right.
But they're gonna do that this, hopefully we'll have it by the 5th, the tree. And they're gonna start decorating for Christmas, too, I think these next two weeks. And then, we have fireworks Friday night down at the youth league field, about 5:00, 5:15. So, and those will be for, because we didn't have them Fall Festival, we had to have them at some point, and we figured it'd be like a post Thanksgiving, pre-Christmas, so a holiday fireworks.
I mean, it'll be pretty and snow.
And I'm hoping it snows.
Yeah. And then, we are also doing like a holiday festive house decorating lights for our yard. And if you go on, I don't know, Proctor Parents, Town of Proctor, like that, there's a little thing about the week that it'll be judged and there'll be gift cards for winners and announced. So, that's something to think about since a lot of people decorate right after Thanksgiving. So...
Yes.
A little something, a little something, something. All right. I was, we sat here the whole time. So, I'm gonna, we'll pass the orders around for people to sign. And since Lisa's here before we get into report and like that, let's just let her, you have in the packet a letter from her and we'll just let her go through her budget. Is that okay?
Sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
How would you like me to start this evening? I wrote a two-page memo explaining what was in the budget. Would you like me to summarize that, read it? Have you all read it?
You could probably just give us the highlights and then we can ask questions after, I think, is probably the best.
I think my biggest point for being here, I mean, I think generally, we've come in right under the budget or at the budget and we've kind of level funded, more or less. But it's really come to my attention, I can't, I can't not speak up for Karen, my very capable assistant, who is really underpaid for the job that she's doing. She's driving all the way from Granville. There's nobody else around who's wanted the job. We posted this job and, you know, she was the only one who's willing to do it. And as I've explained to you before, this model that we have of having an assessor clerk saves you a lot of money in my time. I mean, you really don't want to be paying me at my rate to do the clerical stuff that Karen is very capable of doing. And she's actually getting paid less than what you were paying Jake back, what, five, six years ago? And at that time, he had far, far less experience than Karen does now. So, I'm here to advocate for her and ask that you bring that up. I have very nominal increase for mine. I kind of, my conscience wanted me to level fund it till I got that insurance packet in the mail and like $120 more a month for my health insurance. So, I've asked for a dollar an hour more at my pay rate and I appreciate that, you know, we never really questioned my pay rate. But Karen is highly qualified as an assessor clerk. She's actually one class away from getting, there's now a state required certification to be an assessor, and she's actually one class away from being an assessor in her own right. So, other people who are more aggressive about touting their skills are being paid as an assessor and she's a capable assessor clerk. So, we've asked for, in the budget, how that translates to the bottom line, where she's only here two days a month. It's not a huge difference in money. Judy had originally put in $51.50 in her numbers for Karen's line item for direct labor. And I've put in $57.60 at a rate of $40 an hour, which is what we're asking for, plus an additional $1,000 for mileage to compensate her for driving all the way from Granville. And I just really feel strongly that that's fair. And comparing apples to apples, that's really a level budget. I don't think I will, I don't think I have expended the number of hours budgeted for me in most of the last few years. We've been under budget and you can see that line for my salary is pretty, pretty level funded. So, Judy had actually put in $23,000 for mine. I think with my projections, we won't be more than 19. So, I think we're good there. Judy's other numbers, I think, are all fine. I did confirm, I had the question, I think, from Albert about the Patriot program and I did double check the numbers that we had in there and I thought it was higher. So, you'll see in my notes, I have should be 6028. And then, it dawned on me that Proctor had, we kind of arranged a little bit of a special deal for us where they gave us a lower rate. So, they lowered our rate from 24-something, 2,400-some odd, to 1,500.
That was for the hosting?
That was for the cloud service.
Yes.
Exactly. So, and you had a second contract and, you know, I apologize, with four towns, I got a little confused, but... So, that gives us with that, whether that was the reduced rate that I managed to convince Jeff Leoni to give us because we're such a small town. And this is a bigger drop in our budget than it would be for a town of 10,000 parcels or something. That does include one, one remote user. However, because I brought four towns to the table, we have a second one under re-appraisal company, one under assessor at Proctor, you know, with our email here. And then, during the period of the re-appraisal, they comped one more for John Vickery as the appraisal supervisor, the project supervisor. And the one for John will go away when the re-appraisal is done. But I imagine, as long as I'm assessor for multiple towns with two more coming on in this next year, I think they'll keep the second one for me, which, as you know, we have one PC here. Karen's here, she only uses, she only works on Proctor business when she's in Proctor. So, she pretty much uses it on every other Wednesday. I might go in remotely on occasion, but I, that allows me to do that. Even if Karen is here working on a Wednesday, I can look at things remotely. And there's gonna be some of that coming up with the review that we're starting with the re-appraisal team. Some of that's gonna be in person, they're gonna need to come in and we're gonna have to go through all of the preliminary numbers and gonna have to make sure that that is all defensible and something I can sign off on in June. But some of that'll be done remotely. So, I think we're all set for there. Were you thinking we needed another person to have access in the building?
No, I was wondering, well, first, you know, under the contract services, I knew we had to have the cloud hosting and I didn't know if it was gonna be 1,500 or the 2,600.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, we had the Catalyst annual fee for the software of 3,388, you know? So, I don't know.
Yeah, and the contract, I have my notes on that, which I just talked to Jeff today. So, it was, year one was 1,500, year two, 1,590, year three, 1,685.
Oh, good.
And that was in the second contract that you signed with the adjusted fee. So, I think it's a cheaper way around it because the other kind of cloud hosted option was gonna require us to have a domain server and basically, there went the, some of the savings of not having a server. So, we're not compelled to have that. Moving forward, I mean, I would recommend you consider having something for backup and shared data files in-house, but where you're on the cloud, I mean, you still need it for NEMRIC, too, at this point. So, it doesn't remove that cost, which I assume you have in general fund because NEMRIC is used for tax billing and Celia's department as well. So, the only other thing I, you know, that struck me with the budget is I just wanted to make clear, Judy and I had this conversation, that there's a 10% holdback with the re-appraisal contract. So, some of that will be due after July 3rd, which might help a little bit with those re-appraisal funds where you might get the payment from the state, the per parcel payment might help a tiny bit for that. So, I don't know what your shortfall might be with the re-appraisal fund and whether you should consider adding anything for that. A lot of, that per parcel payment was never intended to pay for the full cost of a re-appraisal. So, a lot of my towns have found that they have to supplement, you know, unless you're waiting 15 years, which is no longer allowed, even if your numbers are good, by the state. So, you, you know, you've gotta do it every six years and it's gonna get pricier. In theory, we're ordered to do them every six years. I don't know who's gonna do them every six years and how towns are gonna afford it, but that's what the legislature passed, is every six years. So, and then, the one other item I had was legal, a fund for legal, which I know it's hard to predict, but boy, I wanna have something in there. You get one taxpayer who takes you to court, even for a residential property and you're into thousands. So, it just kind of goes with the territory with a re-appraisal that, you know? We'll hope for the best that that doesn't happen and try and resolve them at the lower levels, but try as you might, sometimes happens.
How many do, the last time we did re-appraisal, did we have that fought it? Do you have any idea? Is that on that?
I came on right as the re-appraisal had just finished.
Okay.
Oh, I don't know if they had anything go to PVR.
Okay, that's, I didn't...
Pretty sure they didn't have anything go to court.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so... Do we have any idea?
It was weird where some of them came about a couple years after the re-appraisal. So, that's a thing that sometimes happens, that people wait a year and then, you know, I, I don't know what that's about, but maybe it just takes that while to shake out or they think they'll have a better go of it going with the assessor directly than going with the re-appraisal firm. Who knows?
And do we have any idea percentage-wise, what we think the re-appraisal is looking like? We have any preliminary numbers at all?
For increases?
Yeah.
I don't really, they have a few preliminary numbers in there, but they're still working on the land schedule and getting that. Until that's in there, the numbers don't really mean much. But to come up to 100%, to pass muster, you're at, what, 60% or something now?
No, we were higher than that.
Partly because they adjust with your CLA with the court settlement with GMP. So, that's a little bit, it's a little bit of a cushion. It's been helpful to the town that you have that because the higher CLA keeps your tax rate from going up even more. But I think the sales that have come in are more like 60%. So, the goal with the re-appraisal is to be close to 100% for the last three years. So, you know, I'm thinking that 40% is a reasonable, reasonable assumption to make, at least 40% of going up. To hit the sales price, I've seen a lot of sales come in, even in this town, that are 50%. Some are not quite that low and part of the reason you do a re-appraisal because not everybody is at that same level of being under assessed, but almost everybody is under assessed at some level. So, yeah, that's gonna be a big change and your tax rate's gonna be a big change.
Yeah.
And we'll still have that artificial bump because of the hydro, because you got a 15-year agreement for that.
Right.
And I don't know, Brian Fogg was supposed to do, he did the utilities this last year with the PVR taking over the utility assessment, but court settlements are off the table. So, you've got quite a value of having a 15-year settlement that is not adjusted by the CLA. So, in West Rutland, ours runs out, we've got one more year on our court settlement with Velco. But that 40 million he came up with is within reason of what Skip had come up with for an assessment back in 2019. But when you adjust it by our CLA, if we didn't have that court agreement, that would drop down to like 26 million, something like that.
So, the re-appraisal brings us to 100%. Does the cushion then go on top of the 100%? Let's say the 100% is 100%.
Exactly. So, they won't adjust the utilities or anything like that by any more than 100%. But your tax rate will be adjusted if it comes out to 104, 107 or something, something along those lines. It won't be, you know, over 110, I don't think with the math. But it might be a little bit over 100. You know, if John comes in at 98 to 100% on all of the sales in town, so the CLA is gonna come in at that rate.
Yeah.
You're still gonna get that bump.
Okay.
And how much that'll be calculated in a re-appraisal year? They, there's, there's so much Montpelier math here. So, in a re-appraisal year, they don't calculate a true CLA from the sales. They take your CLA and adjust the grand list up from that, divide that by your grand list at the, in the re-appraisal year, which usually comes out around 100, maybe a little over 100. But I don't believe they factor the utilities into that during a re-appraisal. I can get back to you on that because they might, they might actually.
Okay. And then, just for clarification, when we're talking about Karen as an employee, she's classified as a town employee, correct?
She is and that's been her decision. I've tried to suggest to her for years, she would do better to be seen as a contract employee because it's, it is a contracted service. She's not here five days a week or even as a part-time employee.
Right, but she's contracted by the town as a part-time employee. So, I'm just putting that out there as we have budget discussions that...
Yeah, I understand that.
...have either policy, what a part-time employee and what those, when you talk about benefits, okay.
And we've had the same discuss, I do wanna clarify that a little bit more, Lisa, if you have a minute.
Sure.
And I did explain that in my memo and please think about that carefully. I'm keenly aware of it. I know all of my towns are keenly aware of the cost of providing health insurance alone, never mind all the other benefits. So, when you look at a town employee that's only here two days a month and give them the same percentage increase that your other town employees do, that may seem fair on the surface, but when all those other town employees are getting full benefits, it is not fair. Because that's a huge difference in that cost increase. If I were a town employee, my health insurance going up by 120 bucks a month would be partly borne by the employer contribution. And Karen and I don't have any of that. And I think over the years, I've advocated for myself and because I'm a contract employee and I have my own business, I've factored that into my rate. And I don't think Karen has, she's...
Okay, I just wanna be...
You know, I just ask you to consider it. It's, if Karen were to leave, it's gonna cost your town, I don't know how I'd even do it without her, quite honestly, because I'm in five towns. I don't have another day, another two days a month to give you. And I don't have anybody coming in. I mean, if we're gonna get somebody to do this work when the likely scenario is that Karen and/or I retire, it's gonna cost us more than $32 hourly without benefits to find anybody willing to take on this job.
Okay.
So...
All right, any questions? Anybody else have questions, Albert?
Yeah, I have one more in that, you know, from Tyler Technology, their project schedule, you know, the final grand list is gonna be filed on July 1st. And then, the grievance hearings will be 6:15, 2026, or 5:15, 2026 to 6:15, 2026. You know, so the grievance hearings would be with them and, of course, you prior to the final grand list.
Exactly. By law, I have to hold them, but they by contract need to be there to explain their numbers, yes.
Okay, and then, on your letter, the second page, the back of it, that third paragraph of the budget includes hours to support the finalization of the re-appraisal in July through September of 2026. Well, the grand list would have already been filed and the grievance hearings would have already been completed. Is this for the ones that may go to the VCA?
VCA, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's, that was my only question.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's, I don't think we'll need to get an extension and be going beyond that with mister's grievances, but, you know, it could be, could be cutting it close depending on how many grievances we have because we have to, when you hold grievances, you then have seven days to get results of grievances out. And once you send out those result of grievance notices, that's when you finalize the grand list and I turn it over to Celia for her to generate tax bills. And I know she's under a tight window. Sometimes in a re-appraisal year, we've had to adjust that. I'm not, I'm not thinking it's gonna be necessary for Proctor and where Tyler is doing, Proctor and Polit this year, they're doing Proctor first. So, Proctor will be done and Polit doesn't send out their tax bills until end of August. So, that's nice that that works out. That, if I'd have done that in a normal year, staggered it so that I don't have, you know, four towns of grievances all in the third week of June, you know?
All right, anything else?
I don't think so, unless you have other questions for me?
Questions, anyone? Okay, I think we're good then.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody, and have a wonderful night's evening.
All right, so going back to the agenda, annual report, dedication, I guess, cover slash cover. People have thoughts about that, ideas?
Well, I know you had mentioned the bridge because of the 100 year. And I don't know if that, I like to try to stay within the year that the annual report is, which is last year. So, I don't know if a picture of the bridge would be better next year or something like that.
It's 2025, so...
It's, isn't it, isn't it 2026? I mean, it's not right now.
No, it's right now. Next year is the rink.
Okay, so, my thing is, the bridge was on it like three years ago, four years ago? So, I just didn't know if you want to reconsider something else. I did reach out to Dale, asking him for pictures and he has a lot of vid bridge pictures. So, I just, I didn't wanna print them all, so I printed a few just for you guys to look at. I also was given these pictures from June that she took of the park and I thought, I just thought these are really pretty, too. So, I just wanted to share those with you, too, just while you guys are thinking on what you want.
Okay. I mean, I don't think this is a life or death tonight, so we could think about that.
Right, but I'd like, yeah, I want it sooner than later just because I want, I'm starting to put the...
Sure. But we could...
And that could be the last thing I put on the, you know what I mean? The last thing I do for the annual report.
Okay. All right, moving on to...
But the dedication.
Oh, okay.
Is something I'd like people, whether, we don't need to dedicate, we don't always have to dedicate it to anybody. So, if anybody has somebody that they feel strongly about or feel that it should be given to this year, then that's what I was putting it out there for.
Okay. We can circle back around to that. All right, let's go to the budget then. Looking at...
So, I did include the, you wanted the cost for the highway when you were talking about repairs?
Yeah.
So, I included that in the budget just so you'd have it. She wondered how we spent so much money.
I think it was that and then the list of streets eventually, too.
Yeah.
So, essentially, we walked through the Lister one. I guess the question, the big question is, well, a couple of questions. One about legal services, she's asking you to up that from 1,000 to anywhere from, I'm gonna say five to eight, which seems like a big jump. So, here's my spiel on that. I think that if some push came to shove and we had to do that, we do, we could put some of the timber harvest money aside and use some of that rather than, it just seems like a year to put $8,000 into the budget that you don't know you're gonna have to have just as a holding is kind of a creepy thing to do, I think, for taxpayers with the re-appraisal. I would prefer to say we've got this bucket of logging funds and if we're, somebody decides to take it all the way, that we could look at that and allocate or look where else we have and make some adjustments rather than incorporate that huge number.
Right.
That's my...
I agree with you, Lisa. I don't, I don't think we have the front stuff to put it in holding.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, anything else on her budget? All right, fire department budget.
So, they shared their budget with me and they basically had it flat. They didn't raise anything. It has gone up slightly just because of the numbers, they don't normally plug in like the workers' comp, the FICA and all those types of things. So, I do those and those are based mostly on previous years and where the costs have been.
Okay.
Does that include, when they were here earlier talking about air tanks, was that in a separate, financed separately for through the budget?
No, they asked to use the reserve fund.
Yeah, they use the reserve fund, but that, yeah, from the current budget.
And so, that was that printout, which left not a lot of money in there.
No, not hardly anything, really.
Yeah.
Well, between that and the equipment fund, there's nothing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I didn't see in looking through here that there was any drastic jump for anything, so... Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if, like with the equipment fund, if you wanna keep it that high this year?
I think that's a question, after we look at the entire budget and factor some things, that, that's a place where you can come back to, in my opinion. That, I mean, I think that reserve funds are a place where if you're gonna start making some adjustments, that's where I would make them because that's the least draconian kind of impact for tax, for services for taxpayers. So, and we have just, they have just expended quite a bit of money getting a new... So, and, um, we have just, they have just expended quite a bit of money getting a new truck and some different things, so they should be in good shape here. So... All right, Department forty-six, which is the police. And this is, is, are these the numbers that they sent or these are numbers...
They don't send us, they only send us the contracted service, which they increased five percent this year.
Okay. But this, oh, and this is a five percent increase?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, I mean, you have a little wiggle room there because it is our contracted services, so...
Right. I mean, some of the other things we don't ever have cost in, but then when we do, we have no funding in there, so...
Well, is this, and is this the only place we do traffic ordinance signs or in this budget or we do those in highway?
We usually do traffic signs in highway.
Okay. So that's just kind of a duplicity from Nemrick, okay? All right.
Yeah, a lot of these line items are...
Okay, that's what I thought. It seemed like a weird place to have it. And then Department fifty-two, which are streetlights. And so we think that is, you think it's only going up a thousand dollars?
Well, I mean, it's thirty thousand, you know?
Okay.
Thirty-one thousand. I just really bumped it up once. I mean, it...
Well, the letter they sent out, what, I thought it said it was going up.
It could go up.
Like, three, four...
It's outrageous, our streetlights.
Yeah. And our streetlights, I thought, were, um, the solar things. So why are they all, why is it so expensive?
There is a, not for the streetlight, there, well, some is, there's some...
Well, like on our street, it has the solar thing on it.
Yeah, we have like four different accounts that there's solar credits on. And we actually talked about that, like what, if you could do an analysis and actually see what, what Green Mountain Power would charge you without those solar contracts, what the cost would be and what the rollback is at the end of the year if it's worth it. But, I mean, we're in this contract like forever. Um, and the rollback is nothing compared to what we pay. So, and we're still waiting for it. So, um, but I think Green Mountain Power is just gonna go up, I mean...
Well, they sent a letter that said it was going up. I thought it was like three something.
Yeah, our bills have just... I mean, streetlights are the highest, I think, of all of them. Yeah.
Okay.
They're easily, I would say, I'm trying to think of the last one, probably easily three thousand a month.
Okay. All right.
If you wanna see the breakdown of solar con, I can give you that too.
Yeah, I can remember looking at stuff like that before. It's all very light.
How are those billed? Are they billed by number or are they metered?
They're billed by kilowatts that we use.
So they can actually see the meter? Okay.
Yeah. So we get, I mean, we get so many electric bills and they, every electric bill's separate. There, we have one for every pump, pump station, we have one for the sewer, we have for the sewer building, we have the streetlights, we have the park lights, we have the bridge lights, we have, you know, and they send you an individual one for each one.
Yeah, I know Stan used to say it was a...
Oh, it's cra, it's crazy.
It was crazy to break it down with all the...
Yeah. And even their time periods are weird to look at.
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to Department seventy-one, which is the pool.
So that was just up slightly. Um, I bumped up labor just because we're gonna have new people. Uncertain what next year is gonna bring for us. We're gonna have to advertise for a new director, um, lifeguards. It's pretty much...
Yeah, they may have a whole new crew.
Right. And I mean, it hasn't gone up, you know, I mean, it's not like it went up drastically at all, so...
Right.
My fear will just be getting people to actually work there.
Questions?
Good, good guesses.
Right.
Yeah.
I know. Hopefully, a little before the summer comes through.
Okay. And... So, but we pay seven hundred and twenty dollars a year there for the telephone for three months because do we, now, does the pool and the rink have their own separate phone numbers now, I'm guessing?
Yeah, they always have.
No, it used to be we switched back and forth. We used to have the same number and you would just...
Right, but they've had separate phones for a long time.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't know why, because the one at the rink isn't, no one's ever there. The same with both of them, really. Nobody's ever there. And if they are, they always have cell phones. But I would think in an emergency, maybe, if somebody didn't have a cell phone.
No, I can see, like, it wasn't like you didn't have a phone there. It was like, it was the same number for the pool and the same number for the rink. And when the pool was in session, like, obviously, no one was at the rink, so it just rang at the pool.
Yeah.
So you still had a phone both places, but it was just one number, so...
Yeah.
I don't know.
Maybe that changed when they brought in roller skating because it was open in the summer?
Maybe, I don't, maybe, I guess, that's probably, it just seemed, just for, that seems like a huge expenditure for...
Oh, I know.
Three months.
The phones are ridiculous.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying you don't have one, I'm just saying, wow, what a... Okay, and Department seventy-three, which is the skating rink?
So last year it was, the salaries were bumped up because they wanted to be open more in the summer. And so we used actually ARPA funds for a portion of that to pay for that. So that's just something there that, you know, to consider as far as hours and when they're gonna be open, whether it remains at that or goes back to the ten thousand.
Okay. Okay, any questions on that?
I, you know, I like to try and keep the same level of service, you know, for the town, you know, first time we go through the budget. And then I just see here they added this year for the skating rink internet. You know, we're talking about, uh, you know, phones and...
And that was, um, that was actually paid before by donations.
Oh, okay.
So that's why it wasn't in the budget.
Okay, but, okay, they had it in it, okay.
Yeah, they've had it for a while.
So why doesn't that show a bigger increase here then? Because, I mean, you had it, but it wasn't in the budget. Now it is, so that's... It doesn't show that as an increase at all.
Well, it's seven hundred eighty.
No, no, no.
Internet, seven hundred eighty.
Yeah, I, I see that, but it was...
And there was nothing before.
So... That's what I'm saying. It doesn't show that would be a change over here though.
Because, so underneath phone?
Yeah.
Half of that is internet. It's char, it was charged like, so it's phone, but it's actually only a portion of that was the phone and the other portion was internet. But it was under the, it came out of the same line item under the payments.
So is it seven hundred and eighty for the phone and seven hundred and eighty for the...
That was, it was estimated, yes. Because I think the phone is sixty-five dollars a month.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's because the, the way they do donations is, was changed this last year, where they used to use it for this and now they use it to put back into the rink for, like, product versus selling products and keep, like, you buy the product, you make the money, you keep it. This, that was changed so that you buy the product, any donations go towards buying more product. Some donations are turned in, but usually if there's a profit, they try to roll it back into what's being purchased, which also can change. It's up to the committee or the board to change that back if they want.
I'm not saying right now, but, um, based on the meeting we had the other night with them, they were kind of talking about not having so many hours for roller skating. So maybe the fifteen hundred, I wonder, is...
You mean fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand. Is it justified if we roll back their hours so they aren't open so many hours, you know?
Right.
So just throwing that out there.
No.
Okay.
I mean, that's a conversation the board can have and make a decision too.
Yeah, yeah, how many days they wanna be, work on being open.
All right, um, the next is parks, which incorporates a huge number of categories. The biggest one being probably mosquito district.
Yeah, and I don't, I changed it. What, what do you have in there, the twelve thousand?
Yeah.
It's actually twenty-two thousand. I thought the, um, buy-in was up by twenty-twenty-seven and it's not. That's the last year of it, I think.
Okay.
So that's eight, over eight thousand a year plus the thirty-four hundred quarterly to be part of the mosquito district.
So we're at, so we're actually at thirty, uh, thirty-four thousand, right?
Um, no, twenty-two, so it's...
No, the bottom line.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah. Thirty-four, two.
Yeah, well, yeah, we won't have the budget.
It should have came in under last year's figure, Judy. It should be under twenty-one thousand, seven hundred.
Has they only sprayed like three times?
I don't have the...
I mean, is that...
Because the buy-in is eight thousand, one seventy-five. That's a buy-in we pay once for four consecutive years. This is the third year.
Correct.
And then, you know, the twelve thousand, which is our allocation for this year, you know, that's twenty thousand, four hundred something, not twenty-two. Well, I've got the letter right here.
But in FY twenty-five, the actual was twenty-one, eight, seventy-eight.
Yeah, yeah, our, because of the more accurate data with the computer collected data, they reran the numbers, you know, through the calculations for what each route costs and ours came down a little bit, so...
Yeah.
So that's why I say it should have been less than last year.
So it's just, so I'll just reduce that by eight hundred and seventy-five dollars? That twenty-two thousand.
Why, I don't get the eight seventy-five.
Well, eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five and then the twelve thousand for the quarterly comes to twenty thousand, one seventy-five. So twenty-two thousand minus that would be eight seventy-five or eight twenty-five? Right?
Well, are they sending a bill? I don't, I'm seeing what, I mean...
Yes, we send, it was a request of the town to have it done in quarterly installment, so they're sending an invoice, uh, one each quarter.
Right.
So twelve thousand is the maximum amount?
That's, that's the year's total. Divide that by four is what the invoice would be.
So that's reduced from last year then?
Yes.
So it's twelve thousand and eight, one seventy-five?
That's total, yes. That's, uh...
Okay.
So that line item just gets reduced by eight hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Well, from the twenty-two, you mean?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right, any...
And I'm looking at, you know, the, the, the budget that was, you know, sent here to the office and it is full service, twelve thousand, two hundred sixty-seven, and the buy-in is eight thousand, one seventy-five.
All right, so twelve thousand, two sixty-seven, so it's, then it's, it's not eight seventy-five as a reduction, right?
Right. Five fifty-eight, uh... Is that what you got?
So the total's twenty-four, forty-two, right?
Yes. And the twelve thousand, two sixty-seven will be divided by four. Those are be what the town will be invoiced for. And then they'll also get an invoice for the buy-in of eight thousand, one seventy-five.
But it's all rolled into one, so...
Yeah, so it doesn't, you know...
Yeah, so it's only five hundred dollars different.
All right.
Everything else is pretty much the same. I did increase the rees for the veterans and Christmas because they're costly.
Yeah, they've gone up a lot.
I know. The Christmas ones aren't too bad. It's the ones for the Veterans Day, Memorial Day and stuff that...
Okay. Um, Department seventy-six, which is a separate article on the warning.
That's staying the same, do you know?
It is.
Okay.
That's what it is. Staying the same for three years. Um, Department ninety-three, taxes and assessments. So these are all kind of set also. It's not like you have, I mean, oh, I guess you have, oh, the social services or some are in here.
Which one are you looking at?
Ninety-three, taxes and assessments.
Yep. It's pretty much the same.
So what happened with, um, the bus, Marble Valley? They were gonna come, they were gonna do some kind, do they ever do, remember they said they were gonna do a...
Yeah, um, but then, I don't know, Alva, do you wanna talk about that?
Well, I'm not sure what she's questioning, so...
Because they were talking about...
You know the answer, go ahead.
Well, they were talking about they were gonna, they said not enough people ride the bus. If enough people don't ride the bus, then we're not gonna do this. We're gonna start charging fees again, all these things, but our assessment never changes.
Wow, okay, we'll back up a little bit. And the one item was about the ridership. And that we were, the route was underperforming. And so that's a red flag, so they keep monitoring it. And it was just at our last meeting, Tuesday of, uh, last week, uh, Procter was on the agenda. And, uh, well, the Procter ridership is up. So now they've been taken off the under, uh...
Performing?
Performing route to a successful route, so...
And so what does that mean in terms of data? Like, those words mean nothing to me.
Yeah, no, okay, so that means, you know, we're not under the radar anymore. It looks like...
I know, but I don't, I don't know, like, what it, what's the threshold for underperforming? What's the data to bring you up to being a successful? I mean, does that mean two people rode it and now five people ride it?
I can get you the ridership numbers. They used to give us those at each meeting, but they don't anymore. And it was brought up, uh, last month's meeting about recreating or regenerating.
Well, I certainly think that should be in their annual report page too. Sometimes their numbers are a little not so to Procter, so... I mean, I just think things like this, we've got to start, you know, thinking... thinking about, you know. So, I, I mean, I'm fine. People are riding the bus, that's great, but I do believe they have a responsibility to share that information back with us.
Yeah, and they will can, and I will get that ridership information.
Yep.
And then the other part of the question about, uh, you know, uh, uh, they haven't changed their fee in that, and, and re-implementing ridership.
Yep.
Uh, fee in that the state gives them money, grants, and they say you have to match twenty percent of it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, through COVID and some of the programs after COVID, you know, that money has been able to be used as, you know, the buses matching portion. Well, those funds are drying up, so they have to start looking to, how do you replace those funds that you are going to lose? And one of the things they were gonna look at was, you know, uh, starting up with the ridership fees again. But to implement, you know, the payroll network, it would be a net loss because they don't want to have the drivers handling cash anymore. It would be, you know, other means of payment.
Yeah.
And what they'd have to get with the, uh, software and hardware purchases, you know, that would be a loss. They, they wouldn't make any revenue, so that's still, you know, an option.
I mean, it sounds like to me when they're talking about that, they're not thinking about who their ridership is that has, that is going to be purchasing and all this kind of stuff.
Well, yes, that's right. I mean, you have to go with your phone or something, and well, a lot of people that don't have phones.
Right.
All those things are being looked at, Lisa, but, oh, you know, so, so another thing they're looking at, and it's here, you know, and, uh, what we give to the Marble Valley. Because that town portion hasn't changed over a number of years, they're gonna be taking a look at that.
Well, that's why I'd be interested to know then what our ridership is.
Yeah.
How many routes we have. How many times do they come through town? Okay, because at one point, when they were talking about it, they were coming twice. They were coming in and picking up, and they were coming back at like five o'clock or something.
No, and the ridership information, all the routes are on their website, and, and we do have, uh, uh, the maps, but.
Well, I haven't seen a new map in eons. We used to get them to put up in public areas where people come that, and that are near stops. Haven't seen a new map in eons.
Yeah, and the reason they held up printing was they were changing a couple of the routes in Rutland, and there are hoops you have to go through in order to change routes, you know, and they wanted to get all of those finalized and approved and blessed, and then they were gonna start printing.
And I'd be.
I certainly will get you the ridership, or the board ridership numbers, and I'll ask about, you know, the maps again.
Yeah.
And they are, uh, you know, online and on their website, but again, you know, not everybody has a iPhone, you know, the availability to do that. Still, nice to have a, a paper copy.
And then I guess the other thing I'd be interested in, because we've heard this multiple times, that during COVID, they weren't charging. How long has it been since they've charged to ride the bus? Are they charging currently?
No.
Okay, so that seems like a little bit of onus on them when you're talking about, you know, revenue concerns, in my opinion.
But there are, you know, businesses that have contracted with the bus for, like Killington or Okemo.
Sure.
You know, to have the buses run, you know, a, a couple of times a day.
Yep, okay. All right, that, I, that would just be, um, nice information to have, I think.
Okay, yep, it will come.
Thank you. All right, um, anything else in there? Oh, I guess Raddick, the company that was here. We didn't put a number in for them. Is that supposed to be them here?
Um, they are the.
Sixty-two. Rutland Echo Development Corp., is that them, or no? Or are they this one? Chamber and Echo Development?
They're supposed to be Chamber.
Okay.
And I, that's, I included all that information in your packets that they provided after that meeting?
Yep.
Just so you guys could look at it and see the data and stuff, so. So I left it out until. So you decided what you wanted to do.
Okay. All right, ninety-nine is spatial appropriations, so I'm guessing a lot of these haven't come in yet. However, if they want to increase it, they have to, um.
Petition. Right. You can, you can petition, and you have to get like sixty-five signatures, or I've been told also you could go to the select board and get like s- one percent, or seven signatures, come to the board, put it in the budget, and then the town can vote on the budget if they want to approve it. So we've had a few people, so just diff- between I printing this last week and what I've gotten, um, today, I don't know. I have, um, so we have the visiting nurses.
Yep.
RSVP.
Yep.
Rutland Mental Health.
Yep.
Southwestern Vermont Council.
Yep.
Brock.
Yep.
Um, ARC.
Yep.
Um, Vermont Center for Independent Living.
Wait, we haven't, oh, yeah.
I got that.
Oh, wait, no, we don't have that one on here, do we?
Right, I think that's, that just came in.
So that's two fifty?
Yeah, and then the Rutland Parent Child Center.
Yeah, we have that.
Okay, and then I've had three others reach out. Um, one was preventive child abuse of Vermont. They had inquired about being on a petition, and the other one was the Boys and Girls Club. I let them both know that they had to do a petition, and one of them said, no, we probably won't do it then. And then the other one didn't get back to me.
Okay.
And then I also got one today, or, yeah, was it today? For Vermont Association of Conservation Districts, which is basically.
Oh, that used to be one, and then we dropped out of it.
Right, well, this is the Rural Fire Protection Program for hydrants?
No, no.
And they said they don't need to petition because they're not a social services, um.
What are they?
They're just a private organization. They wanted two hundred, so I said I would just bring it to the board.
Yeah, but we're not obligated to fund a private.
Oh, I know. I said I have a chair.
We have something on here, Vermont's cons- wait, I thought we had something before. We don't have that anymore, conservation. But if you go back and.
There could have been, yeah, but not them. That's like hydrants, flushing hydrants and fire.
Why do we need them? We have a fire department.
I don't know. They just inquired.
I don't, for me, that'd be a big no, but.
And then the other one was Vermont Adult Learning.
Dry hydrants and rural water supply systems.
I mean, that's what we have rural water for that we contract if we need to do something.
So I would suggest I just reach out to, um, I told them the same thing, but the one that I just got today, Vermont Adult, that they will have to get a petition if they want to be on the ballot, because otherwise, I think if they just come to you and we put it in the budget, people don't pay attention to the budget and so.
I, yeah, I, I, I don't think, I s- I think also if it's new, that for the first year, and you used to do this. I mean, in fact, this, the board made Catherine May stand up and ask for money the first year they did Bone Builders, and it was a separate article on the warning.
Right.
That if it's the first year, even if they petition, it should be a separate article that the people can vote for. I don't think it should just be hidden inside the.
Right.
The budget. A lot of places, you vote on these individually every single year.
Oh, I know, I know, we don't.
So, but I, in my opinion, I think if it's a new one, that it definitely should be, but I don't see any reason for that one. I mean, we have a fire department. If we need something for things, we have an engineer, and we work with rural water, which is essentially.
Yeah, you know, dry, we don't have any dry hydrants and.
Well, they tried to one year put in for a grant, and they got it, and they were gonna put a dry hydrant, I think, on Beaver Pond.
Right.
It never came to fruition, but, but, yeah, that's, used to be funded, I think, federally, and the funds probably dried up, and now they're looking for other funds to try and keep the program going.
Well, so that'd be a big no from us.
Okay, and I think that, um, so basically if all the rest has come in, it'll probably remain exactly where it's at right now, the same.
Yeah, okay. And usually all of these do.
Right.
Come through and, okay. All right, um. Wait, did we just do this one twice?
I actually attached it twice.
Okay, obviously.
I don't know how that happened, but I did.
Is this like a track? Okay.
I think if it didn't get passed the first time, maybe the second.
There you go. Okay. Uh, motion would be in order to move into the Board of Water Commissioners at seven o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right.
All right, so I met with Aldrich and Elliott last week. Um, we were supposed to meet on the sludge, which I'll go into later, um, but it wasn't so much about that. Um, it was regarding our water asset management plan. The state had come back with us with some criteria that we had to do before they would finally approve it. Um, one of them was doing, um, costing analysis, um, what was our funding strategy? They wanted a five-year budget, and, um, a couple, um, grammatical errors or corrections that they wanted. So I passed along budgets to Aldrich and Elliott, and they're gonna update the plan with this additional information and send it off to the state, so. Then it should be fine. And that's pretty much it for water.
Okay, any questions on that? Anything else in water from anyone? All right, a motion would be in order to move into the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Motion to move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
So when Aldrich and Elliott were here, we were supposed to do the ninety percent meeting for the sludge removal, um, but it wasn't complete, and there were some issues, and the state, I don't know if they even have ever planned on coming down for the meeting, but we postponed it to the ninth of December, and I'm hoping the state does come down. Um, Sinogo is supposed to be done with the sludge removal this week. The First Lagoon had, um, nowhere near as much sludge as they thought it would. The Second had more than they thought it would. So, uh, we're still under budget with it all, but we won't know until the end of the week. Um, also, um, I have a couple of bills that they sent through that we need approval on, um, and they do have a holdback on both the invoices, a ten percent. So if something's wrong, um, then we have that funding that we haven't paid them for. So they did, um, make a huge tear in our second liner, and then Second Lagoon, the liner. They ripped it, so, um, what, they're trying to remove the sludge without having anything done there. So what the plan is, is, uh, it's, it's a pretty good tear. Um, I can send you guys a picture if you want. I think, I think Jeff sent it to me.
Um, is it three feet? Is it eight feet?
Um, it looks like it's from, like, the mid-liner all the way up, so I'm guessing it's a, it's a good-sized tear. I'm guessing at least four or five feet. Um, so what the plan is, is to keep that lagoon shut down for the winter. Um, we don't want to put too much into it to fix it because it's just gonna be replaced in the summer. Um, but once spring comes, we need that second lagoon, so we're gonna operate off the first lagoon, and then figure out how we can patch the second lagoon, so by spring, it's, it's patched and we can use it. So we do have that holdback that we can actually use to expense whatever the cost is for repair, so.
So the second lagoon liner is gonna be replaced during the summer?
Well, yeah, well, both lagoon liners will be, and then the initial plan was is to have the second lagoon done first, and then they changed it, and they wanted the first one done. Now, because of this, they're going back to Plan A, and Lagoon Two will be the first one that's replaced.
So what happens if we have an incredibly wet spring?
Well, that's why they're repairing it before then.
Okay.
Yeah. The winter, they said we'll be fine for the winter running off Lagoon One.
Okay.
But if we get heavy rains in the spring and melt-offs and stuff, we have to have that fixed.
Okay.
So that lagoon will be dry through winter?
Yeah.
The sludge that remains, is that gonna freeze and maybe cause some issues to the liner that's left?
I don't think so. I think they'll probably take most of it out.
Probably get most of the sludge, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and any rain we get is gonna collect in it, and I don't know. I hope.
Whatever's remaining is gonna be, I think, low enough so that it's not gonna be high to freeze to crack it more, so.
All right, and what are the bills?
Um, the bills are. I think I gave them all to everybody.
Oh, it's this, yeah?
Yeah, but I want this one signed because, um, well, you, maybe I gave you the new ones. The, um, originally Jeff hadn't signed them, so I told him I want him signing it before I sign off on them. So they're very confusing, um, if you look at them, the way they do these things. So there is, um, the first one and the second one. So the first one, the total, as you can see, was three hundred forty-six thousand, seven seventy-two, and then that ten percent holdback was thirty-four thousand, five, six, seventy-seven, five seventy-seven. The second one was, um, a total of eighty-three thousand, five hundred thirteen. And if you look at it, when they have the top up here, they assume that the first one was actually included before we paid the second one, so that's why you have the four hundred thirty-nine thousand.
So.
So what we're paying is.
So the bills are for eighty-three thousand, six nineteen, sixty-three, and three, twelve, ninety-four, fifty-seven?
Correct. I think it's eighty-six, isn't it eighty-three, eight, thirteen?
It says eighty-three, six thirteen, sixty-three.
Okay, I thought you said. Yeah. So I'll just pass these around, just so.
Okay, so a motion would be in order to approve and sign two bills from Sinogo. One for three hundred thousand, twelve, ninety-four dollars and fifty-seven cents, and the other one for eighty-three thousand, six thirteen, sixty-three.
Okay, and also I want to add that, um, we don't, we don't have the funding for this yet.
Somehow.
The bond hasn't been approved. Uh, it's been approved, but it hasn't gone through the full process, so we won't have the money till probably January, we're hoping, for the reimbursement. So they suggested taking a loan out for the money, and then we just pay it back when we get the money. I've talked to Celia, and we don't want to do that, because we don't want to pay interest on it. So we have enough money in the water, the wa- the sewer, to float this amount until we get payment for reimbursing the bond, so.
So we think the bond's going to be approved in January?
Yeah, it's actually approved, it's just the process to complete it and get the money funded. Won't be until probably early January. Could be the end of December, but. I just wanted you to know.
Oh, boy. It's, it's approved, but it isn't.
So I'm okay to sign this, then?
Um, yeah, well, a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so we're gonna float them through the sewer.
Yes.
Account.
Sewer bank, yeah.
Or paid through the sewer account.
And we'll just put the money back into that.
And we pay with bond money.
Correct.
Boy, nothing simple.
Not when you involve the state, it's not.
Don't tell them you have money to do that. They won't want to get us the other.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, nothing.
All right, a motion to move our sewer back into the regular board meeting would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, everybody has a sheriff's report in the pocket? And then just town manager's report.
Um, so Brookfield came down last week, um, to look at the pump stations. Oh, sorry, Albert.
I mean, interrupt, we said, but when you said sheriff's report.
Yeah.
You know, can I just make one comment on that before we jump over it?
Yeah.
You know, on sheet, on the backside of Sheet One, you know, I was a little disappointed in the sheriff's verbiage there.
Wait, hold on. Wait, what are?
We're the back of the first page.
Okay, okay, okay.
You know, towards the bottom case, six, four, nine, seven.
Okay.
It said.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, you know, uh, uh, due to the road not being maintained. You know, I, you know, I just love that making me think that the road's not maintained. It may have been icy, or it may have been snow-covered.
or it may have been snow covered. That may have been the reason for the accident, but he's saying the reason for the accident is the road not being maintained. And he was on that road, you know, an hour earlier and I don't see where the deputy contacted Public Works to have any salt, you know, spread because of icy or snowy conditions. So I just wish they used the verbiage that it was snowy condition or icy conditions, not that it's, you know, not being maintained. It is being maintained and.
Right, right. Well, he probably meant it wasn't maintained at that time.
Right.
Well, when you're plowing, you're not doing every square inch every, every second.
Oh, I know, but.
You know, you may have a two hour, one hour loop.
I'm not defending him, but he's justified in saying the road, he went off the road because it was icy, it wasn't maintained, meaning it wasn't salted.
I mean, have we had it?
I mean, he could have put, it wasn't salted yet, which would be the same as not being maintained.
Or he could have said it was snow covered. I mean, we've had, we've had a day when roads are that icy.
Yeah, it, they, it was the same night, the, um.
When was that?
How long ago was that?
Well, it was the same night the truck went over the bank at the pond. I don't know if you knew about that.
Yeah, no.
Right, that was a different accident. But this, this was, I think, on the Florence Road, I think a truck went off the road and I think it was icy and, and we were called and our guys went out and salted. So, because it was one of those nights where you didn't think it was going to be icy or slippery or anything, but it was just enough coating. So, but then after that, after they salted, another truck didn't make the corner at the pond and went over the bank. I mean, they didn't even skid on the corner, they went right across the grass. They weren't trying to go around the corner, they just went straight. And they went airborne and hit a tree, went over the rocks and landed probably three feet from the pond.
So that might be a speed issue.
So, yeah, that's a different accident.
Right.
But they weren't, they weren't called for that. That was after our state police went to that.
But I don't like the implying that it's not being maintained because again, that brings up the question of liability, you know, I just.
Hey, what's weird is at the very top though, he puts snow and ice conditions for a good majority of the day.
Yeah.
So why didn't he incorporate that into that sentence?
Yeah, like, like I say, that's.
And was on, where, what date, it's right, eleven-six, is that the day we lost power? Eleven-six, what? Well, then on the next page it says, investigated complaints about lack of signage for West Proctor Road closure. Road had been opened upon my arrival. What is that about?
So this happened on eleven-eight, eleven-eleven.
I know, but this, this one, eleven-six, on the next page, it says, investigated complaints about lack of sign, is that, is that the day we lost power? I don't even know what day that was.
Maybe. Oh, that's when the fire was down on West Proctor Road.
That's the day they.
When we lost power?
Lost power, yeah.
Yeah.
And someone complained that there wasn't signage?
Right.
Oh, come on.
Actually, there was signage. There was signage. They blocked it, yeah. I don't know what Rutland Town did on their end or how soon they got there, but that could have been on that end.
It was a transformer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jeez.
All right.
All right, well, I'll see if they can word it differently.
Well.
Say road had not yet been salted.
Ah, conditions, you know.
Yeah, or I would just say winter conditions.
Now, our guys get out there as soon as they're notified.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That's right.
But I think that's why he's saying that, because I don't feel like that is.
Well, I'm sure, and he, the way he wrote it wasn't in his head that he was trying to throw anybody under the bus. I think he just said, well, they were slippery, they weren't maintained.
That is, that is.
I bet there's a better chance there was.
If I read that and then I say, Judy, how come our roads aren't being maintained? It says right here, roads not maintained. I ask you, why come the roads aren't being maintained?
You could write it in an affirmative rather than a negative, I think.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's the request, if it could be written in an affirmative rather than a negative.
Use kind words instead of reading fingers.
Be smart. Think about it. The public's reading your report, so. For the amount of money we pay. Okay, town manager report.
So Brookfield came down to look at our pump stations for recommendations on generators for those that do not have them. They're writing up a report and going to be sending it. They were here today actually doing maintenance on the generators we do have. We had a Parks and Rec Committee meeting on the twentieth of November, so we're looking at when it's going to be open for ice skating, hoping for cold temperatures so that can be done. Oh, I've mentioned the car going to the bank already. We got our new loader the week of the seventeenth. It's very beautiful. And Jeff Leers was off of the job for taking down trees and deadwooding others.
And is that, is he, is that a company or just a guy?
He's a contractor. He's like by himself. Well, I don't know if he has help, but he's independent. He's taken trees down for us before.
Okay.
We went out for three quotes. And then I need to start compiling information for annual reports. So anybody who is responsible for writing a report, get them to me and.
All right, I'll start sending those notices out.
Oh, I know.
Just say it in here.
Right. Well, I'm saying if they're like select board meeting, select board report, anybody else that's on committee if they want to write a report.
I, I think like personally for the select board report, if you just want to put like, you have a better database to just highlight the things that are done, like talking about like paving, lagoon, those kinds of things and kind of just break it down, you know.
Okay, so that's my manager's report?
Yeah.
The select board chair has always done their own report. You don't want to?
It's, it's the same thing. What else are we writing about? I mean, the list is writing about reappraisal. I mean, I guess we can talk, I, it just seems like a lot of duplicate stuff. I don't know. If everybody wants to write something, I'm happy to have.
Well, I don't mean all of you. I don't want one from all of you.
No, thank you.
I mean, I, you can think about it.
I'd like to make the annual report thinner, not thicker.
I mean, I think the essence of it is to highlight and provide pertinent information, not just to, I don't know.
Create redundant.
Yeah, write essays. So, I mean, I can write something up, trust me, but it's probably going to be a little bit, you know, from every place and that just seems like, you know, I don't know. Anyway, okay.
I'll write it.
No, I mean, I'm just saying, but your, your report is going to be like the actual like where people can look and say where we made improvements, this is where tax money meant, I mean.
Right.
These are where we have, you know, roads we've done, things like that, so it's more of a data-driven report, I think. All right, so nothing, anything in old or new business?
Just one item, Lisa.
Sure.
Uh, you know, last year we, of Chamber for Economic Development, we, you know, requested data points particular to Proctor.
Yeah.
And the information they gave us, that was in our packet, that's about Bennett's benefits for members. You know, that's not particular to Proctor. You know, that's just benefits for members. They really, you know, didn't give us any of that information we're looking for. Well, we brought three families to look at, you know, your schools. We bought two families to look at the housing.
Yeah.
You know, that type of stuff was what I think we were looking for and they didn't give it to us in the information this last week.
Preaching to the choir with me, so.
So are you, are you going to vote on if you're going to give them money or not? Are you going to wait till the next meeting?
I mean, I don't think we're voting on necessarily anything per se in the budget. I think it's like a first look.
Right.
And then, you know.
So keep it out of the budget for now?
No, I think you can leave it. You put it in there. I mean, I think the more, everything should be in the budget, I think, for the first round. And then I think, then it's easier to look and see, once everything's in there, if we want to make changes, what it is we want to take out or change or whatever. Everything is, is in there, in my opinion, rather than guessing what could and couldn't be in there. But, I mean, that, that's me, but I don't.
Oh, well, I think we certainly need that second look because I think my math showed me we're like a ten point seven percent increase on people with a big reappraisal year and a lot of people are going to be bumped.
Oh, I'm not debating that, but I just, I think it's a good idea to look at everything like just put in the first time and then the second time you start looking about, okay, this is the change, this is the decrease, what does this mean in terms of services, opportunities or things like that, so.
I'm with you on that, Lisa.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right, then a motion would be in order to find that premature general knowledge regarding the town's contract with town personnel would clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage because the select board risks disclosing its negotiating strategy if it discusses the proposed contract terms in public. That's motion one, so I need a.
Motion two.
Okay.
Yeah.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I move that we enter into executive session to discuss the town contracts with personnel under provisions of Title I, Section 313A 1A of the Vermont statutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.